All right, good evening, everyone. I call this meeting to order. It's the regular city council meeting of September 23rd, 2019. The time is 7:30. Will the clerk please take roll?
Mayor Pro Tem Bliss.
I'm here.
Councilman Corbett.
Here.
Councilman Gettings.
Here.
Councilwoman Craftstein.
Here.
Councilwoman Scott. Councilman Soltis.
Here.
Mayor Hartwell.
I'm here. Would you please rise if you're able for an invocation to be led by Councilman Robert Corbett and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Infinite wisdom. We thank you for having given us the opportunity to meet together here today, and we ask most humbly for a blessing on our gathering. Brighten our eyes with greater understanding, enrich our hearts with compassion and courage, and again receive our gratitude for this opportunity of fellowship. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move to excuse Councilwoman Scott from this evening's meeting.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Craftstein?
Support.
Is there any discussion on excusing Councilwoman Scott from tonight's meeting? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we add Resolution to be sent to M.D. under, what are we looking for? Reports. Would that be D4?
Okay, thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Ms. Craftstein?
Support.
All right. Motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Counselor Craftstein to add to the agenda item D4, the issue regarding M.D. Is there a discussion on adding this? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. It's added. Are there other additions or deletions? Manager had a question if there's a...
There's support for the amendment to the library contract for the floor, for the carpeting?
Oh, it would need to be added to the agenda if that, if council wanted to...
I'm sorry, what's the title?
Sorry, I don't have that in front of me.
What's the title of that matter?
It would just simply be the amendment to the library carpeting project, D5.
Okay. Your Honor, I would still move to add to the agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Under D5.
Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bliss?
I second.
Thank you. Motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss to add item D5 to the agenda, which is, it's regarding the amendment to the carpeting contract at the library. Any discussion? All in favor to add this signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. It's added. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? All right. Hearing none, we can go to presentations. We have one presentation tonight. It's the 2019 Summer Beautification Awards. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
I'm actually going to defer to Cory Almas for the beautification awards.
Welcome Cory. The floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The beautification committee consisting primarily of the Active Adult Advisory Board reviewed the nominees for the, in mid-July, and selected two outstanding homes as winner and runner-up for the 2019 Beautification Awards. During the review process, it was clear and obvious that many of our residents take great pride in maintaining their homes away of landscape and in gardening. Tonight, we'd like to acknowledge these two outstanding homes. Please allow me to introduce to council and to the public these beautiful residents. First up is our award winner, Mr. Mike Urick of 1817 Elliott. Mike, can you join me? As you'll witness in our presentation, the home immediately caught the committee's eyes as we drove down Elliott. The garden was lined with landscape stones. The variety of colorful flowers complemented the various shrubs and trees along with the well-manicured lush green grass. It makes this home award-winning. On behalf of beautification committee, congratulations to Mr. Mike Urick. Please accept this garden sign. And also a $50 home gift card as our appreciation for John LeBanc. Congratulations. Thank you. Michael, also this. Fairly beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations. Our 2019 Beautification Award runner-up is Mr. and Mrs. Sabalas of 30446 Townley. Can you please run it? As you will see, the ample variety of colorful flowers and perennials make this home very, a very close-up runner-up. The amount of time and effort required to maintain such a vast and beautiful garden was sincerely appreciated by the committee. Congratulations to Mr. and Mrs. Sabalas. We also have a garden sign for you. There you go. There you are. And a $25 Home Depot gift card for our appreciation of your hard work. There you go. Congratulations. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Congratulations. We'd now like to run a brief presentation, not, not just of the winner and the runner-up, but all of the nominees as well. So, please enjoy. Thank you to both recipients, as well as all of the nominees for making their homes look so nice. The beautification committee will be reviewing the holiday lights in December, and we're always looking for nominees. Residents can contact the Department of Public Services in December to nominate themselves or their neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you Cory. All right, continuing on, we can go to a meeting open to the public. This is the opportunity, if people would like to address city council on any subject, please be so kind to limit your comments to three minutes or less, and it'd be helpful if you could give us your name and address. Meeting's open to the public. Welcome.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Deborah Van Slyke, and I live at 26577 Hampden, south of Eleven Mile, and I have a lot of concerns about the construction that's going on, both on Eleven Mile, as well as on I-75 and on the service drive. These huge trucks are coming through our neighborhood on a regular basis. They're making so much now noise this past weekend. I was awake for 47 straight hours. You can't function after, you know, that many hours. The air pollution, I'm very concerned about. I went down and videotaped what they were doing all night long, and I don't understand why they couldn't have started the project earlier in the day and then stopped it within the city code ordinance of what we have for noise control because it was just crazy. And how loud it was, it shook the windows, it shook the house. I mean, even the people that lived real close to it was even worse, as well as when they were breaking down the concrete, they did nothing, in my opinion, that they did nothing to control the dust from the concrete. So, I'm concerned about the air pollution. There's a lot of people that have breathing problems, and what are they going to do? I'd like to know, under the Freedom of Information Act, do they, did they have a variance to be able to be doing the project that late? Who can we write to? Who can we call? What can we do as a city to be part of a team, working together to get this resolved? Because we're going to be looking at this for the next three to four years, and we're paying them with our money, with our taxes. And I want to know that our city's going to be safe, and that our air quality's going to be good, that our house value isn't going to decrease. With that, I'd rather be part of the team. Together, everyone achieves more, but if we're going to have this chaoticness and them basically being able to run wild, I don't know what's going to happen. We need the millage to pass, and if the people aren't going to feel like they're being represented and being taken care of with this construction, you won't get a passing vote on that, and it would be very disappointing because our city deserves better than what we're being treated by the construction people. So, I would like to know those information, and whoever I can speak to after, I would really appreciate your time, but thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Van Slyke. I could make a statement that, for years, the city has officially opposed the construction project expanding I-75. We think it's a waste of taxpayer money. And specifically for the noise complaint, there's been no variance, and in fact, we sent police officers after our residents complained about the after-hours noise, and we received maybe about a dozen complaints. And a police officer did issue a misdemeanor noise violation to that contractor. But it is a larger form of government, and so sometimes the city's not, we just can't satisfy our residents because the big bully is in town.
One, one other quick thing. Is there anything that we can do to have the community meetings besides the council meeting? That we could get a group of people to sign petitions, to get emails going, to get a website going? What can we do as citizens of our great city to fight this, you know? I'm a paralegal, I'd be happy to do any investigation work or whatever I need to do to be part of the team. I'd be more than happy to be a part of it. So, whatever we can do, please let us know. Maybe we could get information put on the Madison Heights website, or get a list of contacts, emails, or something to get going to be a part of this, because I don't want the city to lose on this one. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Your Honor, Cory does have the contact information from M.D. for an email and a phone number, I think, for the residents, but we can also put it on our website, just for tonight.
If you look in the segment 3 tab, the contact info is, if you want to email, it's info@ocp-i75.com. And the phone number you can call is 586-486-3626. The website is www.modernize75.com.
Meeting is still open to the public. Would anyone else like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Got a couple of flags I'd like to present tonight. The first one is, as I do every year, our team sponsors, and we have two sponsors. It's sitting right here. First one is Robert Corbett, Councilman, and the other is Sherman &amp; Sherman. And we want to thank them, as well as all of our sponsors, for supporting Little League Baseball in Madison Heights. That's what helps us go on so that we can keep the cost down for the kids. Thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Mr. McIlvery, I was just going to comment. It was kind of a tough year for my team, much like the Detroit Tigers, but come spring training, we'll be fine.
Okay, good. I've got one other plaque here. First, I want to make a couple comments. As you know, the members on our board of directors for Little League Baseball are aging, to say the least, and we've kind of struggled this year. Our president, Earl Stone, had some health issues early on in the season, as well as Mr. Jackson behind me, who's on the board, myself, and others, so it's been difficult trying to get things done. And we can't thank the City of Madison Heights more than this year. They've done an outstanding job. Whenever we needed something, whether it be putting up the flags, or the nets on the fields, or whatever it was, the city has come to our rescue, and we certainly do appreciate it. So, with that, I have a plaque that we'd like to present to, present it to Justin Kowalski, Supervisor for the Madison Heights Parks and Recreation, in appreciation for your outstanding support and concern for the athletic, athletes, and the families of our community for your dedicated, your dedication is greatly appreciated. Little League Baseball 19, or 2019.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mr. Mayor, Justin couldn't be here tonight, unfortunately, but he wanted me to recognize and acknowledge his staff that works very hard for the DPS and helping provide great quality fields, not just baseball, but, but all of our parks and soccer fields as well. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Thanks. Would anyone else like to address city council on any subject? Good evening.
Good evening. Pat Shiel's a resident of Madison Heights. I wasn't planning on talking this evening, you've heard me many times, but I do see that the second reading is going on for recreational marijuana. I have come before this conso frequently, talking to you about the dangers of recreational marijuana, particularly for our children. Unfortunately, this vote is going to be taking place when Margina's not here. Who is against marijuana? I urge you, as members of the conso for Madison Heights, to please vote down recreational marijuana.
All right, we'll close meeting open to the public. We have communications on the agenda tonight. The first item is C1. It's the resignation of Mary Schultz from the Crime Commission. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, Mary Schultz has submitted her letter of resignation from the Crime Commission. I recommend that council accept her resignation. Due to the reduction of the size in this board, from the boards and commissions review process, the seat vacated will now be eliminated.
What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council accept the resignation of Mary Schultz from the Crime Commission and issue an appropriate certificate.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Ms. Craftstein?
Support.
Thank you. Is there discussion regarding accepting Mary Schultz's resignation from Crime Commission? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. Next communication is C2. It's the resignation of James Smith from the Elected Officials Compensation Commission. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, James Smith has submitted a letter of resignation from the Elected Officials Compensation Commission. Staff and I recommend that council accept his resignation and declare this seat vacant.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Sir, I move that the council accept the resignation of Mr. Smith from the Elected Officials Compensation Commission and issue the appropriate certificate of appreciation to him.
And declare the seat vacant?
Yes, sir.
Is there support?
Your Honor?
Mr. Soltis, support please. Thank you. Any discussion regarding James Smith resignation? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next communication is C3. It's the resignation of Janice Nikitin from the Crime Commission. Mrs. Marsh?
Yes, Janice Nikitin has submitted her letter of resignation from the Crime Commission. Staff and I recommend that council accept her resignation and declare this alternate seat vacant.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I honor roll, sir. I move to accept the resignation of Janice Nikitin from the Crime Commission, declare the seat vacant, and issue the appropriate certificate of appreciation. Could I just send it along?
No, it needs to eliminate, the seat eliminates, right?
No, it's an alternate seat, so it'll just stay vacant, because it's an alternate.
Okay, thanks for the clarification. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Ms. Craftstein?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion regarding Janice Nikitin's resignation from the Crime Commission? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We can go to reports. There are five tonight. First report is D1. It's from the city attorney and the police chief. It's the entertainment agreement for Cadillac Brewing Company. Mrs. Marsh?
Cadillac Straits Brewing Company has submitted an application to obtain an entertainment permit from the Michigan Liquor Control Commission in order to permit trivia contests with prizes, bingo with prizes, acoustic guitar, piano music, and a small band. As council is aware, the city requires an entertainment permit agreement in order to limit the nature of activities that would otherwise be permitted in the licensed premises, and to set forth the conditions for granting the entertainment permit. If council concurs, the appropriate action would be to approve the agreement and to authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the same on behalf of the city, with the next review to take place on or about September 1st, 2021, and representatives from Cadillac Straits are here.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the entertainment agreement with Cadillac Brewing Company, and then authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Ms. Craftstein?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Counselor Craftstein to approve the entertainment agreement with Cadillac Brewing Company LLC, and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute on behalf of the city and the next review occurring September 1st, 2021. Is there discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Just that I'm excited to participate in trivia night, so. I see one of the owners is in the audience. Did you want to take a couple of minutes, if it's okay with the chair, to talk about all the exciting things that are happening at Cadillac Straits?
Good evening, sir. Welcome. Could you identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm Forte Devlin, co-owner of Cadillac Straits Brewing Company. Thank you for the approval of the entertainment agreement. We're planning on starting trivia in October. It'll be Tuesday nights at 7:30 PM, hosted by Sporkle, which, if you're familiar with bar trivia, they're one of the bigger names in the area, and they're a Michigan-based company as well. We're also looking at possibly doing bar bingo on Wednesdays, and we are going to be hosting board game afternoons starting next Sunday. So, we've got the games there available to use anytime people like. Some of the games are a little more complicated, and we'll have a host coming in to help people learn the games. And honestly, we've got private events coming through the place, and yeah, business is good, and we're excited to be part of the community, and everything's been going very well.
Great.
Thank you.
You're very, very welcome business in our city. Thank you.
Yes.
Other discussion from city council? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next item is D2. It's from the CED Director. It's the 2016 Oakland County Brownfield Coalition Agreement Amendment 1. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, Oakland County Brownfield Coalition received a $600,000 grant through the Environmental Protection Agency in 2016, and the grant expired September 1st. Any unexpended funds must be returned to the EPA if Oakland County does not allocate the funds within 90 days of the expiration of this agreement, unless further extensions are granted. Several communities in Oakland County participated in this coalition, and each had $60,000 reserved for their respective communities. Madison Heights was one of these communities, and we have spent approximately $56,000 of our allocated $60. We have about $4,000 remaining. These funds were used to complete environmental testing, including but not limited to Phase 1 and Phase 2 site assessments. In order to expedite the expenditure of the remaining funds within the county so as not to lose the funding, Oakland County Brownfield Coalition is requesting that the city allow the remaining amount of unspent unallocated funds to be dispersed to any participating community within the county. The funds could still be spent within Madison Heights if any projects were eligible during the remainder grant period. Spending the money down helps secure more grant funding through future EPA projects. Staff and I recommend that city council approve the Oakland County Brownfield Consortium Agreement Amendment Number 1 between Oakland County and the City of Madison Heights, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign on behalf of the city. Through this cooperative agreement, the City of Madison Heights and other members of this Brownfield Coalition will return their unspent funds to the overall program to be spent on a first-come-first-served basis in any eligible Oakland County community.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council approve the agreement between Madison Heights and Oakland County regarding the Oakland County Brownfield Consortium Agreement Amendment, and that we further authorize the mayor and the city clerk to sign on behalf of the city.
Thank you. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Gettings?
Support.
Thank you, sir. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Councilman Gettings, to approve the Oakland County Brownfield Consortium Agreement Amendment 1 between the city and Oakland County, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to sign for the city. Is there discussion? Okay, hearing none, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next report is item D3. It's from the fire chief. It's the inter-local agreement with Oakland County Central Support Services. Mrs. Marsh?
Madison Heights and Oakland County Central Support Services are proposing an agreement for the county to perform specialized services on our vehicles for the emergency radio systems. Services include installing and repairing our radio system. The county will perform vehicle services at an hourly rate of $65.11 per hour. The county's hourly rate does not include the cost for parts, supplies, and equipment. Staff and I recommend that city council approve the central support services inter-local agreement between Oakland County and the City of Madison Heights.
Thank you. What's the wish of city council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Sir, I move that the council approve the central, central support services, I see why nobody else spoke up, inter-local agreement between Oakland County and the City of Madison Heights.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Yes, Ms. Craftstein?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Councilman Corbett, seconded by Counselor Craftstein, to approve the central support services inter-local agreement between Oakland County and the City of Madison Heights. Is there discussion? Let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Opposed, say no. The motion carries. We have two more reports. They were added earlier. The first added report is D4 regarding MDOT. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, I have a resolution. We have a resolution urging the Michigan Department of Transportation, or MDOT, to consider resident quality of life during Segment 3 of I-75, whereas the City of Madison Heights has considered the information for Segment 3 of I-75 construction project and understand the need for this project and requests consideration in this process for the quality of life of our residents, whereas the city has concerns over noise, air, and dirt pollution, both during and after construction, whereas the city finds despite a noise ordinance, the overnight construction on Dallas Bridge removal was disruptive to our residents, whereas according to the city's ordinance, Section 17-40, necessary excavations or repairs of bridges, streets, highways buyer on behalf of the city, county, or state during the night when the public safety, welfare, and convenience renders it impossible to perform such work during the day as necessary, whereas the city requests that MDOT increase communication with Madison Heights residents and consider concern for residents living near the construction area of Segment 3 in I-75, whereas six additional bridges will be removed as well as tunneling operation beginning adjacent to a residential area originally planned for north of 12 miles away from a residential area, whereas this construction will disrupt the quality of life of our residents, and the city requests consideration of our noise ordinance as well as citizen concerns, whereas the city requests MDOT work with the contractors to limit noise and pollution as much as possible during construction, tunneling, and bridge removal. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Madison Heights that Madison Heights is aware that construction projects usually cause disruption to the daily lives of residents, however, given the length of I-75 project and the close proximity to our residents, we urge MDOT and MDOT contractors to work with the city and to find harmonious balance to the disruption of the lives of our residents and provide written notification to the residents within proximity or 2,000 feet of construction. Furthermore, written notifications shall include a contact, a telephone number, and an email, and information for contractor representatives, and updated Segment 3 website information, including project information. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution shall be sent to MDOT and other governmental authorities as necessary.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council regarding this resolution?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Bliss?
I move that we adopt a resolution urging MDOT to consider resident quality of life in Segment 3 of the I-75 construction project.
Thank you. Is there support?
Your Honor.
Ms. Grafstein?
Support.
Thank you. A motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Counselor Grafstein, to adopt the resolution to MDOT to consider our residents' quality of life during Segment 3 of the expansion of I-75. I'd like to start discussion by saying we should send a copy of this to the governor's office, the lieutenant governor's office, our state senator, our state representative, and also the Oakland County Executive's Office. Is there other discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to highlight, as was mentioned earlier in public comment, how big of an inconvenience this was to our residents. We heard it. We heard it in real time. I, for one, had more messages on my Facebook page when I woke up that morning than I think I've ever seen from residents, and it was amazing to see because at that exact moment, our city staff was working together to be able to put this in place. They were working to limit the noise. They were issuing that misdemeanor. The city did such an incredible job responding to the residents in real time. It's not, it doesn't happen often where we're able to hear of the problem at public comments and be able to have at least a version of a solution right here and ready to go. So, I'm really proud and I thank staff for all of the time and effort that they put in. We are really blessed as a city to have such an amazing staff who cares so much about the quality of life of our residents, and it shows right here.
Great. Other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
As I am wont to do, in the middle of the night occasionally, I am thumping around my house, and it was funny. I know the report said that some of the work had let up a little after the citation and so on, but I can tell you that at 3:15 in the morning on Saturday, I was startled by noise coming out of the window, and it took me a minute. I did not remember what was going on. I heard it, and I'm on a straight line almost two miles away. Now, it's a quiet night, but I, you know, and I can't define what I heard. I didn't hear explosions or anything, but there was certainly significant activity, and I'm two miles away. I'd be out of my mind if I was 2,000 feet. So, yeah, thank you to the staff for working on this. Thank you to the police department for working with the manager's office to coordinate a response in real time to what was going on, so, thank you.
Other discussion from City Council?
Your Honor?
Yes, please.
I would just like to echo the sentiments, thanking staff and the police for being on top of this. The city has no control over this, and we so far have done everything we can to say no. We have an ordinance. You need to abide by it, and unfortunately, we've been ignored, but we are working on it, and we need your help because you can complain to us as much as you want, but there's only so much we can do. So, Mr. Almus has provided a website that has a phone number and an email. Please contact them. You can still contact us, but if you contact them, maybe enough people contacting them, the message will get through. There are people who live here. There are people who are trying to sleep. We have an ordinance. Why are you ignoring our city ordinance? So, just any help we can get. Thank you for bringing that to our attention here in this forum, and thank you to everyone who has called and who has reached out, but please take it to the next level. Take it to the people who are actually in charge of I-75 and who are creating this issue.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? All right, let's vote on this resolution. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. The next item, we added to the agenda. It's listed as D5. It's the library contractual services for the carpet. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, this is for an amendment to a recent library carpeting project that council approved before August the 26th. So, when the contractor started working that library service, we found that there was seepage through the floor. There was also another issue of the prior flooring had been placed down with adhesive that had a reaction to the tile adhesive that they did not properly remove. This required the work to be stopped, and that project has been put on hold now for approximately two weeks. We now have a change order from the current vendor who is requesting $30,000 to properly treat the floor and put down two coats of seal to take care of the moisture problem. We have had quite a few humidity issues in that building throughout the years. We've struggled to try to replace them, and we now feel that this is a significant part of that problem as well. So, this work is outside the scope of the normal removal and preparation. It does require a change order. The initial amount was $37,050. However, they are not going to be replacing the carpet under the shelving anymore, so that reduces it by $2,200, and they can also complete the work by sectioning off the building, so certain areas will be closed for approximately two days at a time. That will reduce it by an additional $4,000, bringing the total to $30,850. Staff did go back and look at the original proposals. FloorCraft was the lowest proposal by a significant amount. The second lowest bidder was approximately $10,000 more, and the highest bidder was $113,000. FloorCraft's original bid, I believe, was $61,000, so this will bring the project to a total of about $90,000. However, we still feel that they are doing the best job. They could have just put down the carpet and not even told us about it, so we're very appreciative that they did work with us to try to come up with a solution. We feel they're still the best vendor and would still be the most economical when we went back and looked at the rates compared to the other vendors in this project. So, staff and I would respectfully request that council approve this change order so we can complete this project to the library carpeting replacement in an amount not to exceed the $30,850, which would require sections of a library to be closed, but the main library would remain open. They did offer us another proposal to reduce it an additional $2,000 if we completely closed the building for four days, but that didn't seem like a very good return to me, so. The funding, we do have money available in the library reserve as well if council chooses to make this amendment.
Thank you. Would someone from council be willing to approve the change order for $30,850 for the library carpet replacement project to the lowest qualified bidder, FloorCraft?
Your Honor?
Oh, Mr. Gettings?
I'll be willing to make the motion.
Okay, thank you, sir. Is there support?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Corbett?
Support.
Thank you. Is there discussion on this item?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
Mr. Marsh, I was listening. Did you get into the how that happened? How it was that that section was? As I recall, it goes, it dates back, the original laying of the carpeting or tile?
Yes, it's my understanding there were actually two problems. So, back in 2007, we had the library renovated. There was carpeting squares put down at that time, and they were supposed to remove the tile, remove the adhesive, put down new adhesive in the tile squares. It appears now that they only removed the tile. They did not remove the adhesive. They put down new adhesive with tile, and those two things had an interaction. There also was moisture coming up through the floor because they didn't seal the floor, so that has caused a problem as well. So, there has been throughout the years, probably at least the past five to six years to my knowledge, there has been moisture around the edges of the carpet. We initially thought that was coming from the outside, and council may remember you approved the project to seal the walls, which did help partially, but that's still going on, and we now believe that it is coming up through the floor, but Corey may be able to elaborate on the explanation if there's more details needed.
Yeah. Well, we've got the contractor here. If you have any technical questions you'd like to ask Matt Maddox with FloorCraft?
Welcome, Mr. Maddox. Thank you for joining us tonight.
As far as the technical informations go, there is two issues with the concrete. One is, you've already heard, the two adhesives are reacting together. The second is, I've drilled and taken moisture readings from within the concrete, and they're up to 99 and 95 percent. So, you are drawing water. Concrete acts as a sponge, and it's drawing water from underneath the library and pushing it up through the carpet tiles. At the time of the bid, the carpet had just been cleaned prior, or all the contractors would have seen the black residue coming up through between the seams of the carpet tile. But with it having just been cleaned, and at the entrance to library being a new concrete slab from a previous renovation, the areas we inspected at the time of the bid weren't affected in this manner. So, now with the moisture coming up through the slab, FloorCraft's proposal is, we're going to come in with an abatement chemical, remove all the old adhesive from the previous carpet insulation and the tile insulation prior to that. We're going to rinse clean, rePH balance the concrete, and then put down a sealer. It goes down in two coats, crisscrossing coats, and it's an epoxy sealer, and what that does will eliminate the 99 percent RH relative humidity that's coming up through the concrete now. It'll absolutely give a much better installation. It'll take care of a lot of the dampness that the library is experiencing now, and it, from the recommendation of the install, the carpet mill is the current proper way to proceed, and that's what we've offered.
99 percent? That's not concrete. That's a pool.
Yes. Actually, if it had gone up to 100 percent, there would be standing water on top of the concrete, so it is substantial moisture movement within.
Well, and as was mentioned in the report by Mrs. Marsh, the money, the $30,000, will be coming from the reserve fund, which is what this money is intended for. This isn't borrowing from Peter to pay Paul. This is dedicated monies towards the library. I suppose we would have hoped maybe to spend it on something else down the line, but you spend what you have to, I suppose, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes?
This is clearly a latent defect that the contractor didn't know about, and there's no economic advantage, obviously, to go out to rebid the project, so.
No, he's there.
Right. There's no economic advantage to go back out, so.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to go back out.
Other discussion? All right, let's vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. The motion carries. That concludes reports. We can go to ordinances. There's one for City Council's consideration. It's Ordinance 2144, the opt-out of recreation marijuana facilities. This is the second reading. Mrs. Marsh, do you have a report?
Yes, on November 6th, 2018, Michigan voters approved the Michigan Regulation and Taxation of Marijuana Act, Proposal 18-1, which legalized recreational marijuana and recreational marijuana establishments. On July 3rd, the Marijuana Regulatory Agency issued emergency administrative rules for the purpose of implementing this act. The MRA has stated that they will start accepting applications for recreational marijuana establishments on November 1st. Thus, Michigan municipalities must decide if they are going to allow or prohibit state-licensed recreational marijuana establishments prior to the state issuing license on November 1st, or municipalities will effectively lose the ability to enact any local regulation concerning recreational marijuana establishments. Thus, attached for City Council's consideration is a proposed ordinance that prohibits recreational marijuana establishments pursuant to the MRTMA. If there is support for recreational marijuana facilities in the future, this opt-out will give the City Council time to direct staff on the desired direction regarding possible conversion of existing medical marijuana facilities into recreational marijuana establishments, and whether or not to open up new license for new applicants or consider awarding additional license to those applicants that were runners-up in the medical marijuana process.
Thank you. What's the wish of City Council? Any motions from council? Okay, we can move on. The next item are minutes from the regular City Council meeting of September 6, 2019. Yes?
I would make a motion. I move that we adopt Ordinance 2144 on second reading with the inclusion of the original sunset clause.
Thank you. Is there support for this motion?
Your Honor.
Ms. Grafstein?
I support this with the inclusion of the sunset clause.
Okay, thank you. So, a motion was made by Mayor Pro Tem Bliss, seconded by Counselor Grafstein, to adopt Ordinance 2144 on second reading with the inclusion of the original sunset clause. Is there discussion on this item?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Just really quick, I know there was a lot of discussion on the sunset clause in our last meeting. I think it's important, and I almost think it's comical to have it removed because when we adopted ITAC as a board, the original motion on that had a sunset clause for an IT-focused board in the city. This is a much bigger issue. It's something that would allow us to signal to the residents that we are working on it and we will continue to work on it, and I would defer to the city attorney, but I think if we don't, if we don't get this done tonight, then there's a potential for the Wild, Wild West as licenses begin to be distributed on November 1st.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Sherman?
The important thing is that we pass something so that we can control the process. I think that we've done an excellent job with medical marijuana, and I think it's important to do the same thing with recreational. Obviously, and that means with a sunset or without a sunset. A sunset is a procedural tool. Doesn't mean that if it's not included, doesn't mean that the council's not going to revisit the issue. On the other hand, the sunset does say that there'll be an expiration. In either event, we need to be able to control it. If we do not pass an ordinance, whichever one it is, we're going to lose control, and we're running out of time, so I would, I would ask the council, implore the council, to do something relative to the second reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there other discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Corbett?
My thinking on the sunset provision has not changed. I see less reason tonight than ever to get involved with it. We have seen more examples of sunset laws over the years that have negative impacts, negative consequences. I agree that something needs to be done by November, what is it, first?
It's November first. However, we have to have two readings of an ordinance, and then ten days to publish it for it to take effect.
Understood. But the Council has already spoken on the matter, and, I mean, I understand it has to pass on two readings, I get that. But, no, I don't support it, and I will continue to hold for a clear... Because, and at the end of the day, in case anybody wonders, it's absolutely useless. I'm not sure what the connection to the ITAC committee was, but the fact of the matter is, there's absolutely no need for a sunset provision. Majority of Council, if they come to a consensus, can change anything at any time that they want. But the sudden artificial deadline makes no sense, and it ties your hands, it forces you. At the very least, it creates unnecessary work down the line. So, no, I thought that we acted responsibly a couple, well, two weeks ago, and I continue to believe that a clean opt-out is what makes sense for the community, and that's my view of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other discussion? Mr. Mayor? Yes, Mr. Soltis?
I would like to make an alternate motion to table this, because we have one of our representatives not here to vote on such an important matter.
Could you set a timeframe on the motion to table? That's typically standard.
I believe that she'll be back in two weeks, the next council session.
The next council session, okay. All right, a motion was made by Councilman Soltis to table this matter until the next regular council meeting. Is there support for the substitute motion?
Support.
Mr. Corbett? Thank you. Is there discussion on the substitute motion to table until the next regular City Council meeting?
Quick question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So, if we table till October?
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth, then we could call a special... Would we have ten days, or we'd need twenty days or ten days to... Say we passed an ordinance on the first Monday, or the first council meeting in October, would we still have time to address Mr. Sherman's timetable?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yes, the answer to that is yes, because October fourteenth, we'd have ten days in which to publish it, would take effect before November the first.
Okay, and we'd have another meeting the twenty-eighth of October?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Other discussion on the motion to table until October fourteenth, regular council meeting? All right, we can vote. To help me, could we do a roll call vote? So, the motion that we're voting on is whether to table this discussion until the next regular City Council meeting, which happens to be October fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. A yes vote would be to table. Clerk, will you please take the vote?
Councilman Geddings?
Yes.
Councilor Graffstein?
No.
Councilwoman... I'm sorry. Councilman Soltis?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Temblis?
No.
Councilman Corbett?
Yes.
Mayor Hurtwell?
I vote no, and the motion fails three to three. That returns us back to the original motion to adopt Ordinance twenty-one forty-four with the original sunset clause. Is there additional discussion for this original motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Could we have a roll call in it, please, sir?
All right. Last chance for discussion?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yes, Mr. Geddings?
Just so everybody here in the room, including myself, could the city attorney just explain both sides of this vote, and what it would do if we voted one way or the other, please?
The members that would like to have a sunset provision would like the population, the residents, to know that this is a temporary, this is us taking control of the situation so that we don't have people coming in here and selling or possessing recreation, or selling and producing recreational marijuana without us regulating it, and who has a license. I know I said that very inartfully, but the point being is that they want to say that this is only temporary and that Council will come back to this situation. Those who are against the sunset provision, their position is, is that there's no need for a sunset provision, because it forces you to do something rather, and you can still do something later on. So, it's really, I like to say that a sunset provision is really more of a procedural tool. So, there's pluses and minuses either way. I think that most people would agree that this, that Council is going to deal with this issue, but we're just, we're opting out on a temporary basis until we know what kind of state regulations we're looking at, and so that we can control. So, whether we have it or we don't have it, the important thing from the legal standpoint is, is that we have some type of ordinance, that we opt out even if it's temporary.
Thank you.
I hope that's the explanation.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'd like to add something. I mean, that's the legal standpoint, but for myself and for some of the others, I gather, that there was a councilman that said last time that we don't want to send a wrong signal to those who want the recreational marijuana in the city, and to me, it's the signal that says that, you know what, we may not have it, and so that's an added factor that I think needs to be considered, Mr. Geddings.
Other discussion?
Your Honor?
Yes?
Just to continue the discussion that our city attorney was saying, this is an opt-out in either direction. The only real change here is whether or not we are defining a date that we will have another discussion by. Whatever the state rules are, we don't have them yet. They're going to start giving licenses. We don't understand what it's going to look like. This Council, and the future Council, may decide to do nothing. They may decide to take up the issue, but it signals to our residents that we're actually working on it, that we are doing something, and it signals to those who would want to get those licenses that they can wait in the process instead of circulating a petition on their own to get it done on their own. And so, it's us taking control and showing the residents that we're taking control, and it's an opt-out either way. So, I don't understand, I mean, I get there's some philosophical differences on the sunset clause. As Councilman Corbett noted earlier, he didn't understand the relation to ITAC. Well, I don't either. If it was so important to have a sunset clause on ITAC, I don't understand why it's not important for us to have it on one of the largest issues that we will ever see, that thousands of our residents voted for. I think we owe it to our residents to signal that we're working on it and will do our due diligence. Whatever happens in the future, I think we just need to signal that we're going to get it done. We're going to actually have a real debate, real legal opinions, and we will make a decision. The decision could be to continue the opt-out. The decision could be to opt-in. I don't know what it's going to be down the road, but I do want to signal to our residents that we're actually doing our jobs and looking into it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, please.
The fact of the matter is, if this motion fails, we will be revisiting it. There is the option to reconsider, and that is my intentions. If the proposal, this proposal is defeated, as a member of the prevailing side, I will reintroduce at the next meeting a reconsideration with a full consult, which is really, I think, what Mr. Geddings was looking for and Mr. Soltis. So, one way or the other, like I said, this is just an interim to try and use pressure on the Council, because we have a member absent, and, you know, okay, nice try, but the fact of the matter is, is that the Council took a position, and if this motion is defeated, we will come back to it. We will come back to it in two weeks, and we will hopefully adopt one that reflects the intentions of the Council.
Other discussion? All right. There was a request for a roll call vote, so I'll restate the motion before we vote. The motion is to adopt Ordinance twenty-one forty-four on second reading, which is an opt-out of recreational marijuana, and it includes the original sunset clause.
Your Honor?
Yes?
Before we vote, if I may have our city attorney go through the timeline again, so the meetings in October are the fourteenth and twenty-eighth, is that correct? And it would have to take effect ten days after that?
Yes.
With licenses potentially being distributed November first?
That's accurate.
Is that correct?
Yes, that's accurate.
So, during that gap, if anybody got a license and set up shop, we're effectively opted in?
We'd lose control. We'd lose control.
So, this isn't as easy as revisiting it down the line?
There is a provision for an emergency adoption of an ordinance, but I don't really see the need for that at this particular point if an ordinance is passed. I think that most people understand that Council reserves the right to change this at some later date, if it wants to, and it probably will, but this is simply for us to control the situation, control how the licenses are given out, and I think that's a very important issue.
Okay, so a yes vote is to adopt this ordinance on second reading, which will have the effect of temporarily banning recreational marijuana in the city of Madison Heights, and it includes a sunset clause as originally stated. A no vote would oppose that. Will the clerk please take the vote?
Councilor Graffstein?
Yes.
Councilman Soltis?
No.
Mayor Pro Temblis?
Yes.
Councilman Corbett?
No.
Councilman Geddings?
No.
Mayor Hurtwell?
I vote yes, and the motion fails three to three. We can continue on. What's the wish of the City Council regarding the minutes from the last regular meeting?
Your Honor, I move that the Council adopt the regular meeting minutes of nine, six, nineteen, as printed.
Thank you. Is there support?
Support, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Geddings? Any discussion on adopting the minute? The minutes is printed? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. The motion carries. Any nominations, store boards, and commissions tonight? Okay, before we adjourn, I don't believe we have any more business, I'd invite any closing comments from staff and City Council. I'll begin with Mr. Corbett.
Just a couple of quick items, just a reminder that I still maintain office hours. One, three at the library on Fridays. Anybody who'd like to stop by and talk about any issues or anything going on with the city is welcome to do so. Welcome to the entertainment aspect over at the brewery. I've gone by there a couple times, and I'm either a half hour late or an hour too soon, but congratulations, you're a key part of our development in the quarter, and we really appreciate it, and good luck. I hope that works out for you guys. And that's all I have this evening, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Bliss?
Yes, Your Honor. Really excited to see all of the submissions for our, I guess, internal grant program that we're running with budgeted savings that we found in the budget process. Our quality-of-life boards have been really busy trying to figure out the best ways that they would like to allocate that money, if it's available at the end of the year. I serve on many of those quality-of-life boards, and there's been some incredible, I mean, absolutely incredible ideas. I'm really excited for this process to go through, hoping that, you know, we'll be able to dedicate as much money as we can find to be able to do as many of these projects as we possibly can. Things like having tablets and headphones available for use at the library, things like that, that modernizes the library in a way that I think is really cool. An art show inside a venue that would be like a gala event, things like that, murals in parks, a new volleyball court, all of these things would make a big difference in our city, but for very low costs across the board. And so, I'm really excited that that project is starting to come to a close. All of the boards have been meeting about it, and there's been some incredible ideas from all of our, all of our quality-of-life boards, and I'm just really excited to see how it turns out.
Great, thank you, sir. Mr. Geddings?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I believe Cheryl will probably touch on this, but the absentee ballots will be going out real soon. I encourage everybody to vote. Vote your conscience and partake in the voting process that we have here in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Assistant City Attorney, Mr. Sherman?
I just want to congratulate members of Council. I mean, this is basically a thankless job, and I think you guys do a wonderful... You deal with the tough issues, you don't always agree, but you do a great job up here, and I appreciate it from the legal department's standpoint.
Your raise is approved. No, he did not ask.
Twenty-five years ago.
City Manager, Mrs. Marsh?
I have nothing this evening.
Thank you. City Clerk, Ms. Prince?
Excuse me. Yes, thank you. The absentee ballots are, have been received in the office. We're in the process of testing those ballots and processing all the applications we received to date. If you have not applied for an absentee ballot, please call our office at five eight three oh eight two six. We'd be happy to send you an application if you have not done so already, and the election is November fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Graffstein?
Just want to mention to everyone that on October twelfth and thirteenth, actually, I guess the entire week before that, the city is doing our first citywide costume swap. It was something that was, someone asked me about earlier in the summer, and I brought it to the Environmental Committee last week, and I then contacted all the elementary schools, Madison and the Fort Lamphier Elementary Schools, and everyone is excited to participate in this. So, for the week of October seventh, if you have any costumes, we're taking newborn up to adult, and we're also taking pet costumes. So, if you have any costumes that you would like to drop off either at the library or one of the schools, they will be collecting them, and then Saturday afternoon, we are going to sort through them, get them set up, and Sunday afternoon, October thirteenth, from one to five, we will be hosting a free costume pickup. So, for people who are looking for a costume, we're also looking for volunteers, so if you can help out Saturday afternoon, help us arrange them, set them up, and if you can help Sunday afternoon with handing them out and just taking care of any chaos that may take place, that would be great. Environmental Committee is also working on three tree initiatives right now, and hopefully in sometime in the next month, we'll be able to have details about the one, which will be taking place this fall. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Soltis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to, some well wishes for Margene Scott. Hopefully, you know, she's doing good, and she'll come back here in two weeks. We're all praying for her and hoping she recovers quickly. The second thing is, I'm reading about our new Congressman, Andy Levin. He created a bipartisan bill with another legislator aimed at providing support for in-home caregivers today, excuse me, passed the House Education and Labor Committee as part of the Dignity and Aging Act. The bill was first introduced as a Supporting Family Caregivers Act, and according to Congressman Levin, it's supporting caregivers starts with understanding their specific needs, and that's why they authored it. Legislation will help us determine, help them determine what kinds of targeted groups caregivers need, and that what they need for their loved ones in the home care, which is a huge issue, so I'm glad to hear that. Second, I don't know if anyone saw on one of the TV channels that there's a group, it's called the Environmental Working Group, EWG, that did some testing on drinking water throughout the nation, and they calculated that, they called it a toxic cocktail, our drinking water, contains mixes of contaminants. They calculated the combined health impact of twenty-two carcinogens, cancer-causing, and forty-eight thousand, within forty-eight thousand water systems nationwide. They estimate that these chemicals altogether could result in about a hundred thousand cancer cases over a lifetime. cancer cases over a lifetime. Um, and they go on to talk about the different types. Uh, one is arsenic, byproducts chemicals for disinfecting our water, radioactive chemicals, uranium, radium, um, and so forth. So then they talk about, like, what part of the system in the nation, uh, that has more problems than not. Um, they said that, um, uh, it's not like the water crisis in Flint, uh, with mismanagement old lead pipes, uh, but here's the problem. Government agencies assess water pollutants one by one, and that is not realistic because we are exposed to various contaminants of chemicals at one time. So yes, one individual is considered legal, legal limit, uh, but when they're grouped together, that's the problem. It really shows the combined effects of multiple pollutants that could hurt our health. Um, so our water system is the Great Lakes Water Authority. Um, they seem to raise our rates every year. I'm not quite sure why, but they do. Um, they say that our water system is, um, is fine, you know, they test it, but again, they're talking about, uh, where it's just one versus combining all of them together. It's interesting that the CO, um, is McCormick. Uh, she makes about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars a year. Uh, that's quite a bit, um, and they still keep charging all the, us for these rates. Um, I don't know any other commodity where we're paying every year for everything that we drink, and yet it may cause, uh, problems, health problems. So I think, um, I think we should do something about it. I think we should maybe look into it more. I think we should test our water for the different contaminants and combine them together, uh, and see if our water is really as safe as they say it is. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I, um, I just wanted to, uh, remind the public that a, a very special, uh, event dedication, commemoration happened tonight, uh, thanks to the Madison Heights Women's Club and the Chamber of Commerce, who, uh, dedicated an outdoor bench in the memory of, uh, the late Mayor Ed Swanson. Um, and I understand it was a really touching ceremony. Mr. Corbett had some comments, uh, Mr. Sherman and others. Um, it was nice to see the former city manager, John Austin, um, to just share stories about Ed Swanson, so, um, I do, I know, I would know that Mayor Swanson would appreciate, um, this dedication because he would frequently talk about, um, accessibility to our residents on these city, uh, city hall grounds, and so to have a, a nice place to rest under his tree, I think is a fitting tribute to him, so thank you to the organizations who, who put that together in his memory. Um, I believe that's all. Uh, there's no further business. The meeting is adjourned.